Our Heavenly Father, give us the power to discern right from wrong and allow our words to be governed thereby the laws of the Lamb. May cooperation be permitted and be the mutual aim of those who are in attendance so that all may work for the good of our beloved city, country, and thy glory. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the provided minutes.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
A second.
Have a motion a second, is there any additions or corrections? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. At this time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before you get a motion for that, two things. A, Commissioner Poe had asked that at 7 o'clock she be excused for a family-related issue, and then, secondly, item J, new business, number one, public hearing for alcohol beverage application, 2016.05, that has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we ask that that be subtracted from the agenda tonight.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion for the amended agenda.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
A second.
All right, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
All right, next public comment, and if you'd please fill out that comment card, and just a reminder, this section is reserved for public comments, all matters are concerned pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do you have any cards? Okay.
Mr. Tom Wally?
Good afternoon. I'd just like to address the parking problem that we have here in Madeira Beach, and maybe get you guys thinking about a workshop that you can put together so we utilize the- humongous parking lot at Church by the Sea for public parking on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holiday events, not just the six events that they allow us to do it now, but every single weekend. You go up to Clearwater, it costs you $50 to park your car up there, there's no parking spots. Go down to Passag grill, there's no parking spots, we have no parking. I travel up and down the beach every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's no parking. We've got a huge parking lot. The church does so much for the community, AA, feeding the homeless, the youth groups that we have there. Now the church needs a hand from the city to allow us to generate some money, and the parking lot would help us generate some money and alleviate parking. Why do we want to generate some money? We want you to let us put a ginormous digital sign in front of that church. We've got two old beat-up signs there that aren't conforming signs. We'd like to put a sign out there that says, "Church service starting in a half hour, 29 minutes, 39 minutes, AA meeting starting in 30 minutes, 25 minutes, 10 minutes." And we want to help the community more than we're helping it now, and I think that if you would allow us to do parking there, it would allow, and it would allow us to pay for a ginormous sign to help the community, AA meeting starting in 15 minutes, you know? And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, I'd like you to have a workshop for short-term vacation rentals. I think, I went back and I read the news article, the articles you guys had a couple years ago about them, saying that it created a problem with the neighborhoods. Well, I've had long-term rentals in my house, and the last guy that I had in my house, I literally had to put an insurance claim in for the damage that was done. And the roommates that I've had in my house, I had to have one of them evicted, and it's all public record. So, I mean, I think that you should do a workshop considering short-term rentals in Madeira Beach for the residents that can control it and keep it under control, and make a living doing it. And that's it, thank you very much. And I appreciate all that you guys are doing, all great people, it's nice to see you.
Come real quick before you leave, and I appreciate everything that you do for Church by the Sea, I know you work with the youth groups, I know you work with pastors out there, and you know, I see you always involved. And Mr. City Manager, what we just brought up in our last workshop, doesn't that kind of work for what they're trying to do, doing the permit?
Well, I think for an increased number of events, it certainly wouldn't allow them to do it 365 days out of the year, but that doesn't mean that it's impossible, that's something we could work towards. Now, the one thing that you did pick up on is the digital signage, and you do know that those are prohibited by code, you would not be able to install those, so we'd have to-
That one out front here.
If it's government-installed in a right-of-way, that's permitted, so-
Our church right now is suffering. It's suffering with attendance, it's suffering because all the things that we do for the community, and when you go to the Board of Trustees meeting, which was tonight, what do they tell you? What can we do to advertise for the church? Put a friggin' sign out front. And then I pull in here, and you guys got a big sign out front there, I'm like, really? Like, oh, they got a sign like that out front, and they won't let us have a digital sign? I mean, it's just, it's a church, it's an outreach for the community, we're not there doing something bad, we're out there helping the community, and we'd like to advertise our services. And the signs that we have there now, one of them is rickety, and the other one, every time I mow that lawn, I bash my head on it. So, it's not to code.
That's understood, we don't usually engage people during public comment, but when I say it's prohibited, it's prohibited by code now. Digital signage is something that the Planning Commission is going to take up, and the entire signage-
You're right here, around the city of Madeira Beach. If you wanted our church to have a sign that looks like God built it, you'd figure out a way to help us do it to help you.
That's kind of what we're getting at, it just takes a little bit of time. So, with that being said, we can certainly, Mr. Mayor, whatever you want to workshop, just right now, the digital signage part would be-
And I thought that was going in front of the workshop, in front of the Planning-
Plan Commission's going to start that up in September, although we don't have a quorum for hours.
But, Tom, if that'd be a good time to follow that, and be able to make public comment at the, at their meeting, at the planning, because that's where it starts, the Planning Commission is before-
You've got to get the parking approved first so we can generate some money to pay for that. And the 365-
Yeah, right, don't put the car in front of the horse.
It's not 365, nobody knows that you can park at Church by the Sea. So, when the residents from Tampa, and Bradenton, and Sarasota are coming over here, and they see that on a Saturday and Sunday that you can park there, they're going to come back and park there the following week. Right now, we just had an event where we did it for the 4th of July, the kids did a fundraiser out there, and when the parking lot filled up, the youth pastor went home, you know what I'm saying? But I want to-
No, we've had lots that we've allowed to have parked, you know, not 365 days out of the year, but there's certainly something that we can come up with, so I'm not saying it's impossible, we just have to figure it out.
Let's work together and get it done.
Tom, give me a call, and we'll sit down and meet with the City Manager. Say, give me a call, and we'll meet with the City Manager, you and myself. Thank you. Madam City Clerk? That's it?
Okay.
Closing public comment. Next consent agenda, Board of Commissioners, District 4 appointment, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to let you take that over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the work session, we discussed briefly the fact that former Commissioner Shontz resigned, the city has an obligation to replace her, and some commissioner in her seat, that has to be done within 30 days. She resigned June 14th, therefore you have to appoint somebody before July 14th. There was a ballot that was submitted to the four commissioners after the city had received three applicants. I just wanted to go over who those applicants were. It was John Dowthert, Hooch Gavahy, and Joseph Fola. Wanted to also confirm that after the tabulation form had been submitted to the four commissioners, Mr. Gavahy is in the lead position at this point, there would need to be a motion to appoint him, once you confirm that the tabulation forms that were in the workshop packet were the tabulation forms for each one of the commissioners, and I guess a head nod would be the way to do that, or acknowledgement that those tabulations forms were theirs. And then, once you appoint Mr. Gavahy, I'm going to go ahead and have him do the oath of office, and then he could step up onto the dais after that.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time I'll entertain a motion to accept Hooch Gavahy as the Commissioner for District 4.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry. Motion made, and second it, and I'd like to just comment, Hooch, looking at your application, I mean, I looked at everybody's application, and yours did stand out. I mean, everybody's had certain qualifications to bring, but I believe you have sat on 12 to 16 different boards, I think you're currently sitting on four to six boards, I know you've chaired the majority of the boards you've been on, you've been on the Board of SWIFT-MUD, which I see, when you're looking at somebody to sit up here, you're looking at what they bring to the table, and things that you can bring to the table for the city of Madeira Beach between, you're working with the county commissioners, past governors that wrote you recommendations, past president that wrote you a recommendation, I mean, you bring a lot to the table that you can bring here to the city of Madeira Beach. Every county commissioner gave me a call recommending you, other mayors of other cities, as a matter of fact, there's commissioners here from other cities to be here with you tonight, they gave me your recommendation, so I just wanted to say I think you'll make an outstanding member of this commission, and you've done a lot for the city of Madeira Beach through the years, and here's your chance to do even more. Any other commissioners?
Do we need to validate that, is that what you want to do?
Yeah, we got to vote on it.
I'd like you to also acknowledge the fact that the tabulations that were in the workshop were the tabulations of each one of you. The reason I want to do that, I want to make sure that there is no question later on that that tabulation was done outside of this commission. In other words, we're curing any possible defect, and so that's why I want you to do it that way. So, if you could acknowledge that the tabulations that were in the workshop packet that were listed for each, the mayor, Commissioner District 1, Commissioner District 2, and Commissioner District 3 were the ballot or tabulation forms that you filled out.
Do you want that motion amended?
It doesn't have to be a motion, I just want-
That was definitely my form that I filled out.
Okay, and that's what I'm looking for from the other commissioners as well.
Yes, it was my form also.
Okay, it was my form.
Not four?
Okay, thank you. So, then you, at this point-
There is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, okay.
Is there any further comment?
Well, I would just like to say that, you know, I know that Hooch has done a lot outside of Madeira Beach, but the reason that I put you as my number-one choice is because you love Madeira Beach. That really needs to be your heart, and that's your heart. I mean, I've seen you appear at the podium talking about Madeira Beach and what it means to you, and living here, and again, I think awards are overrated. You can get a lot of awards, that's not the reason I chose you. The reason I chose you is because you love Madeira Beach. So, if you continue on that path, you'll now get along really, really well. Thanks.
I just wanted to say, Hooch, that I used to sit in the audience for the commission meetings, and you sat with me lots of times, and I met you when I was on the planning board, and you were very helpful sitting in the audience, sometimes even explaining a few things to me, and I'm looking forward to this opportunity to work with you again.
Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
No.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, would you please swear into the oath of office?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, I am Hooch Gavahy, do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will support-
That I will support.
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
-the Constitution of the state of Florida-
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
-the Charter-
The Charter.
-and the Code of Ordinances-
And the Court of Ordinances.
-of the city of Madeira Beach-
Of the city of Madeira Beach.
-and that I will-
And that I will-
-faithfully discharge-
Faithfully discharge.
-my duties-
My duties.
-as a member of the Board of Commissioners-
As a member of the Board of Commissioners.
-for the city of Madeira Beach-
For the city of Madeira Beach.
-to the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
-in the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by the law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd like, it'd be appropriate if you-
I'm going to get the other Commissioner up on the floor. Will Mr. Commissioner, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'd like to-
I think Commissioner's got his chair a little high.
Oh. Turn on that mic.
How's that?
If you could turn your microphone on, too. There you go.
Is it on? All right.
I don't know where to begin, I am so excited. This is such a wonderful honor for me, but before I say anything, I probably should start by thanking God, the Creator of the universe, to place me in this wonderful, beautiful city of Madeira Beach, among these wonderful people, that I feel very much at home. I come here every day, go to work every day, I look at the beautiful Madeira Beach, and I'm in awe, and that is because of the wonderful leadership and the wonderful people of this town. I also like to thank the Board of Commissioners for giving me this opportunity to serve our public here. Commissioners, citizens, residents, residents, I will not let you down. I will give you every effort, I will give you everything I have to fulfill my duties, to make you proud of me. I will never let you down. Later on, I want you to say that, yes, we voted for Hooch, and he was a good choice, and I would like Commissioner Poe to get to that level also. I would make every effort to work with her and make her realize that I really, really want to make her proud.
It's Poe.
Poe, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I can't pronounce yours either.
All right, I apologize. So, also Commissioner Shontz, she gave her life to this town, she was on this board for many, many years, she has given so much of her life to the citizens of this town, she has a big shoe, I don't think I can fill that, but I can promise you that I will make every effort, to the best of my ability, to serve the citizens, the citizens of this town right. Also, District 4 is a very unique part of the city because it is located at the gateway to the city. In other words, if you're coming to Madeira Beach from Seminole, you're coming to Madeira Beach from St. Pete, you're coming to Madeira Beach from even Clearwater and Reddington shores, North Reddington, you are going to District 4 to get to the rest of our town. All right? District 4 also has our city hall in there, we have a school in District 4, we have our marina, we have a lot of businesses, good combination of businesses and residential is in this town, in this district. So, I would love to work with this commission, come up with some ideas, maybe have some workshops, maybe work through the city manager to maybe share some ideas and see what the rest of this commission think. I really want to try very hard, and I really want to make you proud. I also want to say that the staff is really, really, really wonderful. We can't find a better city manager, folks, than Shane, Shane Crawford. Thank you very much for everything you're doing for this town. I also would like to thank my friends that are here. I know it was such a short notice. You know, Commissioner Cardalis here, Cookie Kennedy, Commissioner with Indian Rocks, or I have to say this, Helen England is, I have two moms here, okay? Helen England is one of them, and she just turned, July 7th, she turned 103, and she has to be- Yes, yes.
And Hooch, the sad thing is she could probably outdance all of us together.
Yes. And she has been skiing with me for many, many years, so when we go to Tahoe, she is, I tell you, she's a whippersnapper. I love her to pieces, and I've known her for like 37 years, you know? And there are a lot of folks in here, Anthony Mena, Mr. Mena, that develops a lot of hotels, I've done work for him for many, many years. I have Jim Gibbs in the back, my son is here, my wife is here, my wonderful friends are here, Noreen Hodges and Steve, you know, thank you very much, I appreciate you coming here. I'd like to close by saying that, you know, things don't happen by coincidence, by accident, I used to think that when I was younger, but as I get older, I realize that, you know, there's an upper hand that really leads us into directions that we go. So, I want to thank God Almighty for placing me here, and again, thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to serve Madeira Beach. I thought I already thanked my wife.
I can't remember if I did.
All right, I'm going to do it. Thank you, honey, thank you for all your help, but you're going to have to realize that, you know, you're going to have to share me with this town. God bless America, God bless everybody. Thank you.
Good for you.
All right, at this time, I am going to pass the gavel to the most senior member of this commission, Commissioner Lister, and I'd like to make a motion to keep into things and the order it's been going through the last year, to make a motion to nominate Hooch Gavahy as the Vice Mayor of the city of Madeira Beach.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to have Hooch become Vice Mayor of Madeira Beach. Is there any public comment on that? Seeing no one from the public, is there any Commissioner that would like to speak on that?
Actually, Mr. Chair, just one quick thing, and like I said, Hooch, you bring a lot with you, and I think that you'll make an outstanding Vice Mayor, I wouldn't feel, have any hesitation for you to sit at any meeting that I chair right now, so.
Thank you very much for that, I accept, thank you.
Call for a vote?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Did I say it right?
You'll learn, you got it.
You do rely-
Motion passes.
You do rely to race, doesn't come with this.
I rescind the gavel.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Madam City Clerk, you're off the button, now you can just call him Mr. Vice Mayor. Don't say I never think of you now. All right, moving on, contracts and agreements, Mr. City Manager, would you like to proceed with the, for contracts and agreements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're here just to answer any questions, all the information was provided for you in your packet, the first one is authorization of a grant agreement with Florida Department of Economic Opportunity in the amount of $350,000.
And at this time, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the contract agreements.
I believe we need to go to each one, or do we-
Number one, I'm sorry, authorization of grant agreement HL059 with the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity in amount of 350. Do I need to do two and three also?
No, just one at a time.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the authorization of the amount of $350,000 for economic opportunity, and Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure that's clear, that's the $350,000 that we received from appropriations from the state of Florida.
That is, is that the case?
Yeah, that's the appropriations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is the for the lighting project, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other comment from any other Commissioner? Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Proceed with item number two, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item number two, approval of amendment to the traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement, this is a routine type agreement that we have, and staff recommendations for approval, all the information's provided for you in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further comments from staff? Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
All right, I'm number three, Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, approval for the city to modify the FEMA mitigation sub-grant agreement, that long number with FDEM, to reflect the budget and scope of work, increase both federal and non-federal self-explanatory staff recommendations for approval.
All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion to approve number three.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, and Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure, working on this, does this also work on helping our CRS numbers, for approval for our CRS numbers? I know right now we've got some great numbers that we've worked through-
We've actually just improved, and so, yeah, I think, I don't want to say it's only been the past work that's improved that, but it's certainly being involved in this, but this is basically saying is that we're helping more people through this cycle.
And I believe the last time our CRS numbers approved, it helped people with their flood insurance, so it's a great thing that we can do this for our residents here in the city of Madeira Beach.
That is a correct statement, Mr. Mayor.
I know, thank you very much, and is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, item number four, Mr. City Manager.
Item number four, approval of Madeira Beach bus shelter maintenance agreement with Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority, despite my sidebar conversation with Commissioner Lister, staff recommendation is for approval.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further comments from staff? Is there any further comments? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, and the reason why I said that about sidebar conversation with Commissioner Lister is, PS, the agreement basically states that they're not going to maintain the structures or do, frankly, do anything to them. I just wanted to give Dave Marzicano and his group a pat on the back, because whenever something needs to be done to those things, we just do it internally, otherwise it takes quite a long time for a work order to be completed and garbage can to be emptied, a diaper to be removed, that type of thing, so.
Thank you. Next ordinance 2016-06, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance 2016-06, an ordinance to the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, creating section 86-29 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for administrative waivers, providing for purpose, applicability, authority, application process, review, findings and decision, conditions of approval, and appeal procedures, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance 2016-06 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2016-06.
Second, I have a motion and a second, is there any?
I'm sorry, I had a question. Okay, on this here, it says contingent.
It's from what we did on the-
It was contingent on the recommendation from the Planning Commission last night. I actually had an opportunity to speak to Commissioner Poe about this. What this does, the meat and potatoes of this ordinance strictly states that in regards to setbacks, it's five feet, or 15 percent, whatever is more restrictive, can now be handled by an administrative waiver. Usually those types of things are granted in the variance hearing with the magistrate. What this does is allow, frankly, cuts down on the amount of time that somebody wants to do something to their piece of property, but also would count down, cuts down on special magistrate time and costs, frankly. And so, we have a new magistrate, he had actually given me some guidance on this, I spoke to the city attorney, we're not cutting any new ground, a lot of cities have this type of administrative ordinance to just take care of what I would call the piddly-type request that I need 18 inches to, you know, encroach on a setback, and that's all this is, this is. It was unanimously approved at the Planning Commission last night.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, any, just off the top here, do you know any other municipalities that work like this?
Well, I know that we were told last night that Treasure Island has it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, that's possible. Would these setbacks be site setbacks, or rear, or front, or all around?
I think it's universal, right? So, it'd be any setback in general.
So, for instance, if we have a seawall, and you have a setback to the seawall, and typically, the dead man is about 18 feet, and if you encroach to the dead man, you're going to have to get a structural engineer to modify the dead man. I'm just thinking that probably would be one of your requirements, right? When you grant the variance.
They are still going to have to abide by the requirements, and it's not, there has to be a reason, there has to be a findings for them to have this special waiver, we're not just going to give it to anyone, they have to provide us information as to why they are requesting it, and then we'll check the information and make sure that they meet, you know, all the standards that they need to. So, if it was something, example, to go into the dead man, we would not approve something like that if it would affect the seawall.
Okay, and this variance is merely limited to just setbacks, or are there any other items that you-
There are some other items, one is ADA, for an example. A lot of times, someone may need a ramp, and according to the code, they do not meet the setbacks or something. That is something that the city manager or designee can say, you know what, we're going to go ahead and accept this because ADA is required. Another one is on parking, that off-site parking or something, that someone may need an extra space, well, if they give us more, if they lessen their impervious surface, then we can discuss maybe one parking space or something like that. It's just to relax just a little bit, so, because a lot of the properties here are older properties that were around before we had code, and so in order for them to enjoy- And so, in order for them to enjoy the same things that previous property owners had, this allows for that. So those are just a couple of things that the administrative waiver will help with the city.
The way that I'll handle it administratively is I'll put a team together of relevant department heads, we'll go sit down, analyze it, and see whether or not the waiver can be granted. And if we don't grant the waiver, they would still have the ability to go in front of the magistrate and go through the process.
But that still has a cap of five feet. Anything over five feet has to come in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Next, City Manager's proposed budget discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is that time of year where the Finance Director and I probably started this process back in February and engaged the department heads as early as March. This is the city manager's budget, and now I hand it off to you. The millage rate is at last year's rate, so I can't say that taxes won't go up, but the millage rate has not risen. Vince, help me out with the estimate on the property.
It's 9.72 percent.
9.72 percent is when property values went up, so, you know, taxes will go up because of that. However, I believe again, and we have the same dialogue year after year, you know, revenues are conservative, the budget is evolving because you're city center and the things that we do, and the sophistication of Madeira Beach has continued to evolve, and so the budget continues to evolve. Two major points, and they're not hidden in this budget whatsoever. First of all, the budget is put together in a very organized fashion, and I have to hand it off to Vince. He does a fantastic job of making my job easy. In fact, Vince does a majority of the budgeting. I just have to do the redlining and additions as I see fit. Two major cuts that we made was, we did not, I did not include $3 million additional dollars for undergrounding, and I did cut the sheriff's contract by one position, the deputy for short-term rentals, and I feel that we've got that under control. I think we've spent some significant dollars with the special magistrate. I think we took nine to 11 people to the magistrate in one. But I feel with, we used to have a volunteer, he's not a paid volunteer now, which is somewhat of an oxymoron, but we have a gentleman that comes in and does the research for us, and then hands it off to Deputy Coleman to go out and investigate these short-term rentals. That will now be continued to be done by code enforcement, which is Deputy Pat Crager. I've had this conversation with them. Obviously, that's going to add to the workload of, that he has, but I believe that we've gotten short-term rental violations to a point where it's manageable. I would be the first one to admit that when we first went on this venture, it would not have been manageable. We needed Chris Coleman for this first year to get it up to par, so to speak. So those are the two significant reductions in the city manager's budget. Again, this budget is now yours, and if the board sees fit to re-insert either one of those, it's completely your prerogative. So with that, Vince and I are available tonight for any questions or concerns. It's a large document, it's a lot to digest. I suggest that we probably schedule a public hearing sometime in August. Vince has the mandated hearings in September scheduled, but to be quite honest, and I think we've gone through this every year, when September rolls around, it's too late to change it. And so, we need to have probably at least one public hearing at some time in August, whenever the board would want to have that. So with that, any questions or concerns can be addressed to either Vince or I. Again, you can see in your capital plan, the docs for the city hall have been pushed out, they've been pushed out because of permitting. You know, we've had some commentary about that and whether or not that project will ever happen, and it may or may not, but the permitting process is long and tedious, so to speak, and Dave and I are comfortable knowing that, you know, we'll continue to try to do that. That's the project that you have 120 sailboats currently permitted for without any powerboats. Obviously, we're trying to get, I think the last one, Dave, we tried to cut that number in half, but allow powerboats, so it's stuck in permitting. I don't think anything will happen in this next fiscal year, and you might just see that project get pushed and pushed out. However, I, at least from the city manager's spot, view that project as a worthwhile project, so that's why it's maintained. And you guys, I think back in 2009, the Board of Commissioners viewed that as a worthwhile project. So if there's things in here that you want to add or subtract, it's your baby at this point.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Finance Director, if we hadn't had, if it's workable with commissioners, have a workshop hearing on August 16th? Would that still, if there's some things that come up, give you enough time to change things around?
Yeah, absolutely. And, I mean, I can make changes even during the public hearings if we need to, but an August meeting will certainly help.
16th, commissioners, is there, can y'all look in your calendars, and please let, if you can at this time, let the city clerk know if 16th is good for you.
Of course I know, why don't you?
Commissioner Lister, you looking now?
I am.
Okay. Give you a second. Mr. Vice Mayor, 16th?
Yes.
Is that available?
Yes.
Hang on, I'm waiting for Commissioner Lister.
That was August 16th?
Yes, sir.
Tuesday, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much. Time, I imagine, 6:00 PM?
Seven, I think you're going to get more participation when people have to work if we go later. It'll be a late night, but...
Okay, no, that's fine. 7:00 PM?
Aight.
Okay. Fantastic. August 16th, 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. Actually, is there any questions from the commission to the city manager and finance director at this time?
No.
Okay. All right, next resolution 2016-23. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to need to read this in its entirety, if you could just bear with me. Resolution 2016-23, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, establishing the fiscal year 2017 maximum millage rate, scheduling public hearing dates for budget adoption, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners has received a proposed fiscal year 2017 budget, and whereas the City of Madeira Beach must notify the Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office of its proposed millage rate and first public hearing scheduled prior to August 4th, 2016. And whereas the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners intends to propose a maximum millage rate equivalent to that which is included in the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget, and whereas the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners intends to provide advance notice to residents regarding public hearing dates for the fiscal year 2017 budget adoption process. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida. Section 1, the proposed fiscal year 2017 millage rate for the City of Madeira Beach shall not exceed 2.2000 mils. Section 2, public hearings relating to this fiscal year 2017 budget adoption process are hereby scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th at 6:00 PM, and Tuesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM at 300 Municipal Drive, Madeira Beach, Florida, where interested parties may appear and address the Board of Commissioners on budget-related issues. Section 3, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, that was a reading of resolution 2016-23 in its entirety.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass, sorry about that, resolution 2016-23.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from staff?
No.
Is there any further comments?
No, obviously, recommendations for approval, and again, just to go on record, we still have one of those lowest millage rates for a full-service city, and it wasn't easy, but we made it fit. But that's why there had to be some reductions.
And I appreciate, and residents of the city of Madeira Beach appreciate, and Vince, I know that, that leaves from last year's 0.7 percent that our property values rise, but I know that the Marriott this year was on the tax roll, and a couple of other new buildings were on the tax roll after my meetings with the public, with the County Property Appraisers Office, and also, if I'm not correct, I think I am correct, I think this millage rate is the same as the City of Madeira Beach is in the mid-'80s. I think '85, this millage is the same millage rate since 1985. So I don't know how many governments or cities or municipalities can bribe that, but that's a big bragging point. All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next resolution 2016-24. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2016-24, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Fees and Collection Procedures Manual to reflect the fee revisions to Article 1, City Clerk, Article 2, Community Services, and Article 5, Parks and Recreation. The resolution also provides for an effective date upon its adoption. That was a reading of resolution 2016-24 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next, at this time, I believe it's, this motion needs to be read out, Mr. City Attorney, the RFP number 2013-147 and 2013-149, bid award, I believe I just need a motion for approval?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would suggest two separate motions.
They do have to be separate.
You should do it.
Okay, so at this time, I'll do, entertain a motion for RFP number 2013-147.
I'll make the motion for 2013-147.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, would you go ahead and give us an update? I believe also the engineer is here, so if there's any questions...
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Al Carey is in the audience. Mr. Mayor, this is something near and dear to your heart, because I know you love to get roads paved, and this is, this is a major section of your town getting done. The reason why it took so long is that we had to rebid it and do what we needed to do to make the budget make sense. And as long as I still got the floor, and Vince, correct me if I'm wrong, but you see under item A, the authorization of expenditures, we're expending $3.9 million. The difference between the 3.9 and the 4.4 is the county's share of that. Al, and Vince, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. We will receive a contribution from the county in that amount, and so the city only needs to authorize approximately $3.9 million in expenditures.
And also, Mr. Finance Director, I want to make sure that in that amount, that's also the matching amount that we're getting from the SWIFTMUD grant. Is that on that project?
Yes, that project is eligible for SWIFTMUD matching, and it's an estimated amount of $1.3 million, I believe.
$1.4 million. SWIFTMUD, and Pinellas County shares, I thought, $517,000. We're going to pay for all our, excuse me, Al Carey and his associates. Good evening. Pinellas County will pay for their share of the work. When we put new storm pipe in, new inlets, where we have to remove or relocate their infrastructure, they're paying for that portion. And then, there's a little bit of leftover in there of Pinellas County's portion. They happen to see, we happen to see something that needs to be fixed while we're in there, we're going to do it for them.
Okay. Now, the first project, I can't remember from my notes, is that the Bogasiega Avenue, Bogasiega Drive project?
Yeah, the project area, Bogasiega Avenue, Bogasiega Drive, and is bounded by Gulf Boulevard. It's everything on that peninsula. We're putting an all-new stormwater collection system, stormwater culverts, new outfalls. Where we can put the new stormwater outfalls, we have room between the homes, we're putting new pipe. Where we don't have the room, we're going to be putting in what they call a structural liner. It's like a sock, they pull through the existing pipe, they cure it, and it's as good as a new pipe. We're going to be putting pervious concrete down in probably 75 or 70 percent of the project area with new curbs. The very end portion, where Bogasiega Drive and Bogasiega Avenue come together, we're just going to be milling and resurfacing that. That area is so low, we can't really put pervious concrete in there, it wouldn't function like we originally thought we would when we started the project. And then, there's baffle boxes we'll be putting in to collect the sediment prior to discharge to the bay. And that's all part of the SWIFTMUD grant funding requirements.
Mr. Carey, let me ask you a question, because, and I'm probably going to beat the mayor to the punch, but since we had to go back through the bidding process, we're behind in the process, or at least behind in the timeline of where we thought we would be, the mayor's going to ask, when are we going to mobilize and start making a mess?
Contractors on board, I did talk to them yesterday. They're just waiting for your approval. It's Keystone Excavators, so they'll be doing the work. They've got a very good reputation in Pinellas County. I've worked with them on several projects. Probably looking four to six weeks to start. They think they can get the project done between six and nine months. They have a year to do it. It all depends on the rains. If they, you know, it doesn't rain like it has in the last month, you know, they'll be getting it. If they get a real bad rainy season, it's going to slow them down a little bit. But within a year, it'll be done, hopefully sooner. We will be asking, or putting out notices for neighborhood meetings. Hopefully, we'd like to have, within two or three weeks, we'll have maybe one meeting midday, and then another one at maybe six or seven at night, where people can come in, they can look at the plans, they can talk to us one-on-one and see what's going on with their, with the project in front of their home. And so, we've been putting those advertisements out here pretty shortly.
Thank you, Azim.
Mr. Carey, I know you've given me this information before, but do you have the number of outflows that are in that particular project? Because I know they're behind, under each one of our pocket parks. But how many do we have beside personal residences? Because it's really going to disrupt that person, so I'd like to personally go by their house and talk with them before that project starts.
And that's the other reason why we want to have...
And I know you gave me that a couple of years back, but it's been, it's been a while since you gave me that map, so I want to, want to make an effort to do that. If you don't have it tonight, if you could just get that to me? I'm pretty sure we only have seven pocket parks, so there shouldn't be any digging up beside some of those parks.
There are a couple of outfalls that do go between the homes. There are a couple of outfalls that do go between the homes.
That's the two I need to know about. If you could just give me that information later, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, everybody remembers Marcy from Al's firm. She filled in when Lynn Rosetti left the organization. She will be the superintendent working with Dave. Dave will be the point man from the city to manage the project, and she'll be the representative from the firm. So we've got the old team back, so to speak, to manage this project. And it's, it's going to be a tiresome project, but it.
Yeah, it's outstanding she'll be here because she definitely knows our city.
Yep, yep.
And thank you, Mr. Carey. I know you've worked real hard to bring this in budget, so I know what you've been out there trying to do to get this done.
Let me add, we'll include the Hundred and Fortyth Avenue, the new outfall that we, so this project includes that.
Okay.
We'd like to get the contractor out there as soon as possible, get that done. That's, for him, it's maybe a week's worth of work, so.
That's code for, we need to get the signatures on the contractor.
Yeah, I know where I'm going after this. And actually, that's fantastic. So just in case we do get some more storms out there, it might relieve some of the flooding out there on Hundred and Forty. So that's a great thing. And then, Mr. Marsakano, I know you did a lot of work out there with Mr. Carey, so thank you very much. I know you did a lot of work identifying what the issue was out there. So thank you to you and your staff.
Remembering where the plats live.
That's it, brother, you live on an island.
Al, have you obtained NPDS and SWIFTMUD permits or exemptions?
SWIFTMUD permit, yes, we did. We're exempt from NPDS. Not from NPDS, discharge, because we'll have erosion control in place for that. But it was basically just SWIFTMUD permitting, and we're, we got an exemption.
Okay. As far as the outfall being between homes, I'm sure you have an easement secured, right?
Um, no, not, not in every case. A lot of the flats in that area were done back in like late thirties, early forties. And at that particular time, I guess people didn't have the forethought to give an easement. We do have a prescriptive right as a municipality to put our water there. It's been there for fifty, sixty years. So the city's taken the stance that, you know, it's your, it's our pipe, we're going to fix it for you, and...
Okay, and the homeowners are okay with that?
Yeah. We've met with, we'll spend some time, but we've met with every homeowner that has an outfall. A lot of times what happens is, as you know, the pipe, the house is out there slab-on-grade, the pipe's in the ground, maybe three feet below the, the structure of the house. It doesn't really give us an opportunity to get in with any type of equipment without losing the homes. So it's a little more expensive to slip-line it, but it's a, it's a better option for everybody in the end.
At the end of the pipe, where the pipe meets seawall, do you have any sort of a grate to make sure the manatees are secure?
There is, yeah, there is manatee protection. Most of them have the bollards eight inches apart that stick out from the, the outfall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any further questions? Any further comments? Now, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
All right, this time I'll entertain a motion for RFP number two zero one three dash one four nine.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I believe Mr. Carey just went through both projects on this, or is there a separate?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I believe Mr. Carey covered both projects.
Oh, he did.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comments? Would the State Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
All right, next, authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures in the amount of three million nine hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for stormwater drain, drainage and roadway improvements in accordance with RFP number two zero one three dash one four seven and number two zero one three dash one four nine. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the expenditures in the amount of three million nine hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for stormwater drainage and road improvements in accordance with RFP two thousand thirteen dash one forty-seven and two thousand thirteen dash one forty-nine.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Staff recommendations for approval. Again, just note that the three point nine is the real number from the city's standpoint.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question.
Yes.
How many bids did we perceive, how many bids did we receive for this?
The first time we bid it, I believe we had thirteen bidders and nine people bid. That, that bid was rejected, it was high. The second time, there was four bids, five people, five contractors came to pre-construction meeting.
And this bid was the lowest?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment on that. You know, our third storm of the season this year, Colin, was it? It came over the seawalls, and there's no amount of drainage that you can put on an island that's going to get the water off if it comes over the seawalls. So, you know, we're spending good money here to, to keep the streets dry and everything good. But if the water comes over the seawall, folks, we live on an island.
Thank you, Commissioner Lister, well taken. And also, the great thing is, I know that area, I think the last time it was just a pavement job over there, and that was in nineteen ninety-nine. So I know a lot of work is, need to be done in the infrastructure. The city in that area, I believe, is somewhere close to sixty years old.
I got a lot of folks excited about the curbing.
Exactly.
They're excited.
I think actually, your area is the only area that does not have, doesn't have that curbing.
And we're not happy about that.
Yes. Not going to stop the flooding, but you're going to take care of heavy rain events.
That's okay. We keep that grass where it's supposed to be.
All right. I believe, now, City Clerk, as I have you call the roll on that.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, City Manager, discussion and planning zoning department staffing update. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this can be relatively brief. I'm now convinced that the planning and zoning department is now where it needs to be. Michelle Orton came on staff. Definitely impressed me right out of the gates. We did have to do some small reorganization, knowing that she was going to need some assistance. We assigned Ms. Gwen Sinkfield to be her assistant from the building department, and that has proven to be a match made in heaven, maybe, Michelle, if you will. Gwen is excelling at her job duties. Michelle is very comfortable and, and they work very well together. And so the planning and zoning department is back to where it needs to be. And so, with that being said, and I have to be careful on how I word this due to, there's still an ethics complaint filed against me anonymously with the ICMA about my legal relationship, according to the state of Florida, that was unanimously approved by the commission with Ms. McGrady. I think, I believe, back in December, you gave her a four-dollar bump to frankly fill in and then later train Ms. Sinkfield to be the assistant. And so I'm, I'm in no position to make a recommendation. However, I can say to you that you are now in a position to reduce Ms. McGrady's salary back from the raise that you gave her in December. Other than that, the department's up and running, and we couldn't be happier.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
As long as you're happy and the department's running and with full staff?
Yeah, Ms. McGrady trained Gwen Sinkfield last night at the plan commission meeting. Gwen took to it quite easily. That was really the last step in the training. I'm certainly comfortable with it. In fact, we've got more than enough to do in our office, and I'd actually, again, I have to be careful with how I word this, but you're in a position now that Ms. McGrady can just return to her old position and not, not do double duty.
Mr. City Manager, before we kind of move forward to that, and I know this is a different topic, but I know that with the assistant city clerk leaving, and I know that Cheryl has a lot of knowledge as doing city clerk work and working with the city clerk and, and things like that, would, she might have to go over and work in that department before that position is replaced, or if it's going to be replaced. I guess that's going to be actually up to the commission partners replacing that position as an assistant city clerk.
Well, no, actually, actually, it's not. That's my, my employee assigned, that I assigned to Amy. And, and if you would have asked me four years ago, would we need one? And I'm sure we probably had this conversation because the clerk at the time had requested one, I would say no. Amy's office is inundated with paperwork. In fact, I, I don't know how she stays as sane as she is.
I'm not.
Amy's claiming to be losing it from day to day, but it's unfortunate that we're losing C. And, and C is an incredible employee. The mayor, you wrote her a glowing letter of recommendation, so did I. Yeah, you know, we're, we're back in this situation. I'm, I'm just completely backed into a corner because of it. Ms. McGrady did serve, and for the, for the city clerk of, of years ago, Amy, I don't know if we're going to be in a position where, just so you're aware, we have a parking enforcement gentleman that was interested in the position. And so, due to an internal posting, if, if he wants the job and can perform the duties.
I just know she might have to step in, so why am I going to reduce somebody's salary to turn around and have to increase somebody's salary as doing an extra additional duties?
You, you're hitting the nail on the head, Mayor, and I, I didn't, this isn't premeditated by any means.
No, 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 I just wanted to throw it out there when I thought about it.
You know, I'm sure Amy would probably appreciate it if, if at least we've got, you know, when do we lose C? Middle of July?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yeah.
Twenty-second of July. I know Amy's got it on her calendar. You know, if you want to let this go another thirty days to just see where we're at in that position, another gentleman internally did a, did, let's call it what it is, he did try it out, it just wasn't a good fit for him, and he, he went back to his original position. And now we have another gentleman, actually, it's Nick who's running the AV in, in the back. And, and so far, so good. And, and I think he'll probably do a good job. Amy seems pretty content with him. I'm content with him.
He's feeling pretty comfortable.
He's, he's a performer. But he might benefit from maybe another thirty or sixty days of training or at least assistance, because what we don't want to do is drown him out of the gate and scare him out of the job. That being said, we all know Cheryl, she'll, she'll just help out. But if it comes into a training position and you want to let this go for another thirty or sixty days, that's, that's completely up to you. But I'm in no position to make a recommendation due to the relationship.
Can I just throw out there, maybe just let it go for another thirty days, and then at the next commission meeting, have the city manager or the city clerk report back to us?
Yes, that's fine.
I mean, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, it's been my experience.
It's been my experience, if you lower, you know, somebody's salary, they're not going to be happy.
Well, who's just updated, she, she, Ms. McGrady was at a, at a rate, and they bumped her four dollars an hour to play double duty. So now she would not have to play double duty anymore, and you could reduce that salary. However, the mayor brings up an excellent point. And, and again, you know, and I don't want to speak for Nick, and I'm sure he's cringing in the back, but I, I think he's probably going to work out if he wants to keep the job. We, we did create a situation, and Nick currently, well, used to work for Vince, we did create a situation where if he's not interested, he can return to his old position. We don't want to just shove somebody into a job, and if they don't like it, especially internally, that, that they're, they're out of a, out of a position. So again, I, I've, I've put us in this situation, and I apologize for that. Due to the relationship that Ms. McGrady and I have, I can't make a recommendation to you, but you do bring up a point. And Amy, I don't know if you have any input, but I don't know if Nick's going to be up and ready to go by July twenty-second. That's something I can say. Amy, I don't know if you share that or not, but the, the kid might need a month or two of assistance.
Well, he's had, he's had two days, but I'm very impressed with what he's done.
Like I said, if it's brought to the commission, why don't we just go ahead, and if it's okay with the commission, go thirty days, and you and the city clerk report back to us at that time?
Can we just revisit it at the next meeting?
Is that, is that fine with you, with the commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
I'm thinking.
Brother, I'm from the South too, but I'm not that slow.
No, I just, you know, I know Cheryl's going to do whatever has to be done, whether we pay her a hundred dollars or, or, you know, fifty dollars. She's that type of employee.
Yeah.
And I was thinking, maybe she's done so much for so long, she wants a break. And if, and if I reduce her salary four dollars, she's going to physically say, you know, I don't need to work as hard as I've been working. Because she, she, she does a lot, you guys. I, I know, most of you know what she does, but she does a lot, and maybe she wants a break. And so I haven't personally discussed this with her, but I, I would actually lean towards putting it back into her original position and, and letting her take some breathers because she, she works, she works hard. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to compensate our employees that, that do well, and she does really well. But God forbid anything happened to their, her, we need a job description that, that is stable and, and that she, she, she's done. You know, she's here, you can, you don't ask people if.
I, I would do that. I would, I'd hate to speak for Ms. McGrady, but I, I'd put her on the spot. The, the one thing I'm thinking right now, and I hate to do this brainstorm on the floor, is after this sees, there won't be another person to guide Nick along for the next packet. Is that right?
Yeah, but we have a step-by-step guide, and I, I do feel very comfortable with what he's done. He did pretty much this packet.
Based off of what Amy just said, then I would say, it's certainly not worth the four dollars an hour for either one of our sanity. I would, I don't want to recommend or agree with, but I would concur with Commissioner Lister and.
And, and I think it's been a point of contention for a lot of people that, you know, it, it, it happened, and it happened for a really, really good reason. Again, Cheryl, you've done a wonderful job. I have, I have nothing but admiration for that. But to sort of, you know, get it back to normal, let's, let's just do this thing. But I hate to kick the can down the road sometimes.
Time for whatever the commission approves.
If Amy's comfortable, I'm comfortable, because we've got more than enough to do in our office. I just, I really want to make this work with Nick. I think he's a good kid. I think he's a good, good employee.
Yeah, I don't want him to be discouraged.
Right.
So I think, I think you'll do good, but it's totally your decision.
I think you'd take the pressure off of, you know, Cheryl and put the pressure on Nick. So there you go, Nick.
There you go, Nick. Congratulations.
Good luck, buddy.
I'll tell you, like I said, everybody knows Ms. McGrady's work ethic. If he needs help, we're going to give it to him regardless of whether or not you give her four dollars, eight dollars, eight dollars, or take away four dollars. So I think we should just go back in time and undo what we did and just move on with our lives.
So, yeah. Do you need a motion?
Okay.
Commissioner Lister, so. Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, Cheryl, thank you very much for everything you've done in working with C and, and everything you do. I mean, you do an outstanding job. I'm here daily, so I, I see you run around. You definitely, you do a lot. Thank you very, very much. If the residents only knew, I'm telling you, they should.
And this in no way reflects on your job performance. It's been superior, absolutely superior.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Think, next reports and correspondence. Does any commissioners have any reports and correspondence?
Do we need a vote?
Oh, no, I don't think so. I think that was the discussion.
There isn't a motion or anything, so I'll just check.
No, there was just a discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think we should probably have this documented. I think you should make a motion to.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion, Senator, that we reduce her back to her original payment.
Okay.
Salary.
And, and just.
Does that work, Mr. City Attorney? That motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's appropriate. If we can include in that motion, I've had a chance to talk with Vince and to, and our payroll department. It just makes, it, it makes everything a lot easier if we just pay her through the end of the cycle, which is this week. So it's the.
And that's, that's in my motion to pay her through the end of the, end of the month? End of the month?
End of the week.
End of the week.
End of the pay cycle is actually probably the best wording, sorry.
That, that's fine.
Do you have that for the minutes? The motion?
Second.
Have the motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next, reports and correspondence. Does any commissioners have any reports or correspondence? I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I wish you well, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
And I just also wanted to bring up just a real quick thing. The county moving forward with a BLS transport system, it's a basic life support transport system, which I know if anybody's had to take an ambulance ride, it's usually about six hundred and fifty dollars. We've been working on a system right now with the county, and it should be to where you could do group things from going to your, for seniors to be able to go from their homes to the hospital, or hospitals to home, and you're actually going to be able to pay even yearly rates, which should reduce some of the transports that almost in half. So I think it's a great thing that the county is moving forward with this and EMS. And also, what it would do is also create an extra million and a half for the EMS fund. So that'd be more money to use for our fire departments here in Penous County. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Outstanding. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just two quick things, and I'm, hopefully, we can get back to the days of Pat and everybody on the back. There's two department heads I want to bring up tonight real quickly. Dave Marsakano, he's been doing, running Public Works a man down. We have an employee that had to have a pretty serious heart, heart surgery, and we're getting a lot done with basically two Public Works guys with Dave managing, along with his assistant. And so, kudos to him. And then, secondly, Doug Andrews, I was in a meeting with him, and Citizen Appreciation Month was supposed to be just a, a one-time or a one-day event. We're going to have a concert in the park. As you can tell, there's a calendar of events, including a meet and greet with y'all. Obviously, we didn't, well, I'll notice it, but we didn't let you guys know that. That's on August twenty-fifth. So if you can be here, great. We'll make it fun and have a good time. Movie night, the Jaws thing, I think that that's